Good evening. I call this meeting of the Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Barron.
Here.
Ms. Cavill. Mr. Dombrowski. Mrs. Lopez.
Here.
Ms. Russell.
Here.
Mr. Van Dyke.
Here.
Mr. Rosenblum.
Here. Will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is public comments. The Board welcomes you and are pleased to listen to your comments this evening. It is important that you know that this is a public board meeting and not a dialogue, so the Board members will not be responding to your comments or answering questions at this time. As a reminder, this board meeting is being taped and livestreamed. We ask that you please value the procedures and decorum of our meeting and be respectful of those at the podium as so that they may be heard. When I call your name, please come forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Though not required, you may state if you are a resident of the district. Please limit your comments to three minutes. You will receive a notification when you have one minute remaining. Any individuals unused time or place in order may not be deferred to another individual. If you wish a response from the superintendent, please leave your name and phone number with Mr. Teniper. If you do not have the opportunity to speak to us this evening, you can send an email to boardofeducation@D211.org and/or the superintendent, or you can return for our next board meeting. I will be allotting one hour for public comment this evening. So the first name to speak is John Goodman, followed by Angela Christian- Christman, sorry, Christman. So John Goodman.
Can you hear me? All right. My name is John Goodman. I'm running for United States Senate, but I'm not here for a political show. I'm here out of concern for community. I stand before you today not in opposition of one student. I'm not here to talk about woke ideologies or DEI. I'm here because I want to try and appeal to your reason and your logic. A biological male should not be able to compete on a girl's volleyball team or share a locker room. Let me explain why. Everyone should be treated with dignity and respect, right? Inclusion is essential, but inclusion needs to be balanced with fairness, needs to be balanced with safety, and compliance of the law. Girl sports, they were established to ensure that female athletes had equitable opportunities to train, compete, and excel. The biological differences in men and women is vast. We've seen it before. We've seen in girls volleyball, Peyton McNabb suffered black eyes, fractures, brain damage, and partial paralysis because a biological male spiked a volleyball into her face at 70 miles an hour. It ended her athletic career. She hoped to go on to play college volleyball, but that didn't happen. Allowing a biological male to compete in girls' team can intentionally undermine the very opportunities the Title IX was designed to protect. It may discourage young women who've worked hard to earn their place. It could shift the dynamics in ways that are neither fair nor motivating to female athletes. The hypocrisy here is akin to allowing a grown man to compete against children in Pee-wee football.
You have one minute remaining.
Thank you. And that may sound like hyperbole, but the differences are the same: muscle mass, bone mass, speed, athletic prowess. All those differ biologically, whether you identify with it or not. When it comes to a locker room, no matter who you are or what you identify as, if you say that you feel unsafe, if you feel as though you don't feel secure, that should not be ignored. So if you want groundbreaking, revolutionary, inclusive ideas, start a trans league so trans people can compete against each other, but keep biological men out of biological girls' sports. Protect our girls. I yield my time.
Thank you. Next is Angela Christman, followed by Vicki Wilson.
Good evening. My name is Angela Christman. I am a resident of the district, and my daughter is a student at Conan High School. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Angela Christman, and I have been a high school teacher for over 20 years. I have worked in private schools, Chicago Public Schools, and even in our beloved District 211. I have taught transgender students, and I have worked alongside transgender coworkers. This is not about taking a political stance on transgenderism. This is about protecting the privacy rights and safety of all students in our district. I'd like to begin by reminding this Board that you hold an elected position in the district. Your responsibility is to represent the best interest of the students who attend school in the district and the families of those students in the community, not to advance your own personal political agendas. This is not a complicated issue. This is 7th grade social studies, civics lesson 101. The constitutional rights and freedoms that every American enjoys only go so far as the next person's rights. For example, you have the right to free speech, but you can't yell "fire" in a crowded theater because it infringes on other people's rights to safety. You have the right to bear arms, but you don't have the right to shoot anyone that you feel like. You don't even have the right to point a gun at someone that you don't like. You have the right to feel how you feel about your own gender and to say you are whatever gender you want to be, but when you enter a protected, private, girls-only space as a biological male and put biological male genitalia in front of girls in private spaces and allow girls to share spaces with biological males while changing clothes, urinating, or managing their menstrual cycles, you are infringing upon the rights of those girls to their privacy in protected spaces. If biological gender didn't matter in bathrooms, locker rooms, and sports teams, then we wouldn't have a separation of all of those things now. Everyone would just use the same bathroom, the same locker room, and play sports together on the same team. If the district wants to support transgender students, then you need to start digging deep into those budget surpluses that you have every single year and start building separate bathrooms, separate locker rooms, and even separate sports leagues for transgender students that you feel have those rights, because the current policy is trampling on the rights of every other girl and her right to privacy in protected spaces. My daughter will not hide in spaces where she was told she would be protected, and she will not be counseled-
Yeah, one minute remaining.
Thank you. She will not be counseled into feeling comfortable taking her clothes off in front of a six-foot-four biological male, and frankly, it's criminal that that's the solution that you offer. The district policy is a guideline. It's not the law, and it can and needs to be changed to reflect the wishes of the parents in this community that you serve. The lawsuit that bullied this district into creating this policy was in 2017. I worked at Palatine High School at that time, and I can tell you that by no means was their majority support for this policy among students, parents, or teachers. The students were told that if they spoke up, they would be in violation of the school's bullying policy, and teachers were too afraid of losing their overinflated salaries and benefits packages to resist. The parents' voices were dismissed as disruptive and discriminatory. We have had eight years since the implementation of this policy to evaluate the effects of allowing biological males to invade minor girls' private spaces without parental knowledge or consent, by the way, as well as to review the numerous cases reported of injury to female athletes by biological males playing on their sports teams. It is time for this Board to start basing policy on facts, evidence, and the wishes of the constituents who elected them instead of on emotions, fears, and political trends. Thank you.
Next is Vicki Wilson, followed by Terri Paulson.
Good evening, and welcome, Dr. Campbell, to District 211 and to the new Board members as well. To the Board, I urge you to do the job you were elected to do: Lip service is cheap, which is what administrators and most Board members in 211 have been doling out for at least the last 10 years. You need to stop pitting students against each other with your weak and horribly unfair policy. You have been and continue to create a hostile educational environment with this awful policy. The fact that, given the Peyton McNabb situation, this was ever even considered, and that girls continue to be treated like second-class citizens with regard to bathrooms and locker rooms, shows that critical thinking continues to be thrown by the wayside. Good policy cannot be based on feelings that can change from day to day. Good policy is created by stable adults who have the best interests of all students in mind. And while many of you may want to prioritize certain kids over others, two things must be said: one, that's clearly wrong and egregiously unfair and creates new issues with the kids you've decided are less important; second, you aren't even helping the kids you are thinking you're prioritizing, because if you actually cared about these kids, you wouldn't promote a dangerous ideology that does not get to the root of their problems. It pushes experimental and dangerous interventions that enables greedy people to turn them into lifelong lucrative patients, very often leading to serious regret and higher suicidality. Vulnerable kids are being groomed and manipulated, and your policy affirms this heinous behavior. Good policy doesn't create this hostile and bullying environment, yet current policy is doing just this. Good and fair solutions were provided 10 years ago when we sued, and they were ignored. You need to stop treating so many students in District 211 as unimportant. If you don't care about all students, you don't belong on a school board. You need to stop humiliating girls by telling them if they don't like having males in their locker rooms, they can carry their clothes to the nurse's office down the hall. You need to stop condescending to and berating girls for simply wanting what decades of females before them had: their own private spaces to undress and perform private bodily functions away from boys. Women in history gave blood, sweat, and tears to attain sex-based rights for females. How dare you gleefully give them away? If you support minor children making permanent life-altering decisions based on emotional distress that is often temporary so people can profit off them, you should not be involved in policymaking. To tell a child males can become females and vice versa with enough hormones and surgery is not just 100% flat-out wrong, it's evil. The adults in this district need to wake up, stop causing harm to children, stop adding to the distress of them by telling some that their feelings do matter and telling others that they don't.
Your speaking time has ended.
Your job is sound policy based on reality for everyone equally.
Next is Terri Paulson, followed by James Pittman.
As some of you know, my name is Terri Paulson, and I'm a resident of this district. Welcome, Dr. Campbell, to Township High School District 211. Tonight, I'd like to introduce you to some recent history in our district so that you may better understand your role in its future. In 2015, parents found out that unbeknownst to them, the district had for months been allowing a teenage boy to use the girls' locker room during swim class. Although hundreds of parents and community members showed up to protest and urge the school board to put an end to this insanity, they were ignored. Naked teenage boys and girls have been together in our locker rooms ever since. Dr. Campbell, if you believe it's morally permissible for schools to place naked boys and girls together in locker rooms, enabling sexual harassment and without parental knowledge, and if you think it's acceptable to lie to a confused teenager while requiring all students, faculty, and staff to do the same, you are well-suited for District 211. We now have a male student on the girls' volleyball team at Conan High School, despite the fact that it has been amply demonstrated that men have a significant advantage over females in athletics and indeed present a danger to females because of their superior strength. This very situation resulted in a teenage girl in North Carolina being left with permanent head injuries after being spiked in the face by a teenage boy. Dr. Campbell, that if you think one student's feelings are more important than the physical safety of another, and if you think that it's fair that positions on girls' sports teams are taken away from girls and given to boys, you will love it here. If you're just here to place a capstone on your career and collect a very generous retirement package after a few years of service, you are also in the right place, as this has been the historic norm in this district for decades. I hope better things for you. If you believe that the priority of a public school should be to make sure that students have a basic education-
You have one minute remaining.
-you are in the wrong place. I looked up the Illinois School Report Card today. Less than half of all D-211 students are proficient in math and English. Less than half. If you want students to be capable of critical thought and able to accurately examine competing points of view, then you are most assuredly in the wrong place. There is only one point of view in this district, and no one steps out of line. Two kinds of people work here: radical social engineers and cowards who simply follow the path of least resistance. If you think the examples I have given here are appalling and that public schools have veered far away from their primary mission, you have a rough road ahead, but we will do everything we can to support you. Dr. Campbell, welcome to Township High School District 211.
Thank you. James Pittman, followed by Kristen Wagner.
Good evening. My name is James Pittman. I am a resident of 211. I'm also the pastor of New Hope Community Church here in Palatine, Illinois. In 2015, New Hope Community Church started coming to school board meetings to simply articulate this one simple truth: that God created them male and female. In the following years, we began to come to the school board meeting and to protest the pornographic books that we found in D-211 also. Those who criticized us said that we were against books. It's not true. There are a lot of books in 211 that we disagreed with, but that's not what we went after. We went after books that we thought, and seemed to be very evident, was very, very, very pornographic. Case in point, consider the book Jack of Hearts. Here's an excerpt: "Just make sure you've taken a crap before this happens." I'm not going to read this. This is pornographic. Again, Jack of Hearts, a very pornographic book. "I can give you examples upon examples of how we believe that the moral decay in 211 affects our kids very, very negatively." Again, call us crazy, but we thought schools were supposed to focus on reading, math, and science, something we all want our kids to excel in. But then when we started to feel as though the D-211 administrations were teaching morals contrary to what the parents were teaching at home, that's when we started to push back. And as we pushed back, D-211, the administration started to punish people who started to express contrary opinions. Take, for example, former Palatine High School teacher Jeanne Hedgepath, who was fired as a result of questioning social justice on her own personal Facebook page.
You have one minute remaining.
The district used its authority and, using example, fired her and everybody else. Refused to do what she did, and everyone else fell in line. I want to be clear: the issue we see is not with a student. It's with the adults who refuse, the adults who refuse to simply affirm the simple fact of all cultures, ancient and present. The foundation is that God created them male and female, and the fact that there's not a moral clarity to simply articulate that truth, it's a shame. If anyone calls himself or herself a Christian, you can't neglect the fact that God simply says, "Male and females, and there is no other."
Kristen Wagner, followed by Ishan. Thank you. There's only one Ishan.
Hi. I am also a parent in the district. I have a new graduate from Schaumburg who is non-binary, an academic scholar in a million different activities. He, they excelled. I don't think I am so disappointed in my community members that I am seeing here today, because I feel like if they knew one gender nonconforming kid actually knew them, actually knew the dignity, the happiness, the fulfillment, the safety, the authenticity that exists in that child when they are allowed to be themselves, and they are students in this district as much as anybody else is, Christian or non-Christian, and trans people have been with us for thousands of years, this is not new. Every single child, every single child deserves to be able to fully participate in their high school, whether that's athletics, whether that is homecoming court, which my kid was also on, whether that is the arts, music, debate, speech, politics, student council, any of the things that they want to be able to do, they should be able to do. Accommodations can be made. Trans boys are boys, trans girls are girls. And I am so very tired of hearing so much bigotry in my own community against those children. It's absolutely heartbreaking and ridiculous, and I'm glad I'm able to say this here today. Thank you for your time. I very much appreciate it.
Thank you. My name is Ishan Travasova. I am a proud Fremd High School graduate. Now, I've heard a lot of different complaints today, whether it's about banning books, whether it's about social justice, but one complaint I heard about that I think this Board and our community should be concerned about is proficiency. Proficiency in all sorts of subjects, because yes, we have a problem, and we need to work on it. But today, what I am seeing from this community is not about that. It's about one kid. I've heard every speaker today say that this isn't about one kid, that it's not about targeting one child, but today, we are here for a special board meeting about one kid on a Conan volleyball team who has done nothing wrong at all, who has committed the only sin of living their true self. The only thing that we have seen so far is hate. We have seen bigotry present in front of our own eyes, and just like Kristen said, I am tired of hearing children, 14-year-old kids, being villainized for who they are. This is a discussion every child should be able to be in their school districts freely. I was in Fremd not too long ago myself, and I agree with that. Every child does. But humiliating, targeting, and challenging the existence, the being of a person in a public board meeting is not where that happens. Have a meeting with our great new superintendent. Have a meeting with a Board member. Talk to admin. Talk to coaching staff. Why should we put a public display of a kid who has done nothing to hurt anybody, who has done nothing to offend anybody? Every child deserves to be who they are, and discussions should be had. That is what makes us and our community strong, but it doesn't happen by-
You have one minute remaining.
Thank you. It does not happen by trafficking and hate, and I will not stand here and listen to that happen. District 211 is a great district, and it is a district that opens its doors to all, but I went to Fremd not long ago. I had trans friends who felt villainized, who felt targeted, and were bullied. It is a reality in our district, and it is because of hatred like this that innocent children are targeted for who they are. Shame on those who would prefer targeting one kid than having a decent discussion. Thank you.
Kevin Morrison, followed by Grace Ikenbillig.
Good evening, Board, Superintendent, Board members. I want to thank you. I know that this was not the reason for you meeting this evening, and I thank you for giving me the time to speak before you. I'm Kevin Morrison. I'm the co-county commissioner that represents the 15th district that covers the bulk of the 211 school district. I'm a proud graduate of District 211. You know, I was not brave enough to come out of the closet while I attended schools here in our own homeschool district, but that did not mean I did not face bullying. And I just want to remind the folks in this room, we're all adults, but there are kids who are watching this meeting, that there are youth who are hearing what we are saying, and it has an impact on them. And it is not okay for us to dehumanize someone for living their lives authentically. It was not easy for me growing up in the northwest suburbs as an LGBT person. It was actually really hard. I was grateful that I got refuge at a welcoming school like DePaul University, but 211 creates great students. I just went on to graduate from law school with honors. That's the type of youth that are being produced out of District 211 schools. But I think it's really important to be mindful of the language that we use. Transgender and non-binary people exist, and we're not just targeting trans or non-binary adults. We're talking about young, youth, impressionable kids who have emotions and who are most impacted by dehumanizing language. And so I would just hope that people would be mindful and be cautious of the impacts their words have on others. It's not easy to be before you. I was here during, you know, the movements in 2017. I don't want us to backtrack. We need to be a welcoming school. We're a very diverse school district, and, you know, I want to talk briefly about the youth that attend schools here. I know it's not easy, especially when you have family members who are not part of the community, who don't necessarily understand our issues, our concerns, or how it impacts us when people dehumanize us, but you literally could achieve whatever you want. I'm the first openly LGBT person ever elected the Co-County Board of Commissioners. I'm a product of District 211 schools. I survived the bullying that I experienced at Conan High School, and you can too. And so I want you to know that despite the language you might hear before you today, there are so many more people in our community that are here to support you. Kenneth Young actually has an LGBTQ center just down the road, and I want you to know you're welcome and that I see you and that I'm here for you and I will always stand for you. Thank you.
Your speaking time has ended. Thank you. The next is Grace Ikenbillig. Next is Karol Wilk. I hope I pronounced that right. Next is Susan Isak, followed by Judy Janes. I got that one right.
Lived in the district for 25 years. Both my children graduated from Fremd. 10 years ago, District 211 made national news when this Board decided female minor spaces would not be protected from males entering them. It was then at the school board meeting at Conan High School when I spoke with Eli Erlich, who is the co-founder of Trans Students. I needed to know why she advocated for a male to refuse to use the proposed accommodation of a separate restroom that would not only have protected his privacy, but the privacy rights of every girl in the school. She smirked, and she seemed pleased with her answer. I had to use a separate bathroom, and then I was late to class. Well, I didn't buy it. I told her that due to a medical condition that I had, I was never penalized when I was late for class in high school. It's important that you know I have a trans cousin who transitioned from a male to a female 20 years ago. I love and respect my cousin as a human. I am well aware of some challenges she has had. An accommodation for a male to enter female private spaces is one that I believe should come with an IEP. As a parent of a child who needed an accommodation, my child went through a seven-party evaluation before he was offered an accommodation. He simply did not ask for- their gender...
You have one minute remaining.
...and violate girls' private spaces, causing some to possibly experience PTSD. 91% of males, 89% of females grow up to like the gender they were born with. I can only imagine the embarrassment and regret someone may feel later in life that they have caused their fellow classmates to be uncomfortable around them. Excuse me, I'm really sorry. I'm very emotional here. Children who need their own safe space that can easily accommodate their needs without violating the space of another is common courtesy. The equitable solution is a separate space for someone who is dealing with gender dysphoria. I advocate for a policy that does not violate the privacy of others. And for those who need an accommodation to have a full and complete IEP that would suffice their needs.
Next is Judy Janes, followed by Jerry Frida.
Hi, I'm Judy Janes. I'm a resident of Palatine. Both my daughter and son graduated from Fremd High School, and they both played sports while they were at Fremd, including my daughter, who was on the volleyball team. She graduated over 15 years ago. She had teammates who identified across the LGBTQ spectrum. There was no issues. She has gone on to still be friends with them to this day, and some of them have transitioned as adults. I'm also a clinical social worker who has worked in public schools for over 30 years, and it's from these perspectives that I speak tonight. My heart breaks when I think of this young teenager who more likely than not has struggled to be their authentic self while navigating school and fitting in with their peers and is now at the center of this attention that they did not ask for. They, like any other 14-year-old entering high school, is just trying to find their way by seeking out activities to get involved in that bring them joy. To think that they took a risk and tried out for the volleyball team, only to have this unwanted attention from people who know nothing about them is devastating. Identifying as transgender is not a choice and is not an easy road. As adults, we have a responsibility to see them and hear them. We should allow those who know the students best, including school personnel, to work together with them as individuals so they can access the opportunities they choose. I hope as a board, you will help preserve the dignity and rights of transgender students by respecting their gender identity and allowing them to participate in any school activity they choose as their authentic selves. Thank you.
Next is Jerry Frida, followed by Justin O'Rourke.
My name is Jerry Frida. I've been a resident of the district for over four decades, and I've had four children graduate from high school. There are just a couple of facts, remember those, that I would like to emphasize for any further discussions. First, Illinois has a law, specifically the Illinois Human Rights Act, that prohibits discrimination based on gender identity. Students are allowed to participate in high school sports according to their gender identity. The Illinois High School Association, IHSA, has stated even after this year's presidential executive order, that they will continue to follow the state's law regarding transgender athletes' participation in sports. Additionally, our state's Attorney General and the Illinois Department of Human Rights have informed the IHSA that they must adhere to state law, which protects a student's right to participate in sports aligned with their gender identity. And second, according to a report by WG On News this year, quote, "Of the 320,000 student athletes competing in all IHSA sports at all levels, only three people born male asked and received waivers to compete in girls' sports last year," unquote. That's about 0.001% or about 1 in every 100,000 Illinois high school students. So in the future, I would hope that number one, we follow what the law clearly states. And number two, we maintain a sense of perspective and proportion. There are many more critically important decisions to be made to keep this district and our community moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Next is Justin O'Rourke, followed by Jane Van.
Thank you. My name is Justin O'Rourke. I'm a business psychology doctoral candidate, Palatine resident. I live here with my wife Erica and an organizer of the Community Mental Health Project, the group that brought the Community Mental Health Board to Palatine Township. I'm here today because I stumbled upon a Facebook conversation in which grown adults were trying to draw people to this meeting to target local girls volleyball player who identifies as transgender. The Facebook post referenced a story about a North Carolina high school student volleyball player named Peyton McNabb who got a concussion from a volleyball hitting her in the head. The ball happened to be hit by a girl who identified as transgender. Since 2012, more than 214,000 high school students, excuse me, high school and college women's volleyball players have been injured. Almost every one of those injuries involve cisgendered peers. So why is no one calling for the cisgendered athletes involved in those injuries to be banned from sports? Some, excuse me, some commenters on the Facebook post claimed that parents were pulling their kids from the team and that kids were choosing to not participate. It seems that history repeats itself. In 1947, when black athletes like Jackie Robinson joined all-white league... Excuse me! Mr. President, could you call...
Are you going to call decorum?
In 1947, when black athletes like Jackie Robinson joined all-white leagues, some players refused to play. After the 1954 ruling in Brown v. Board of Education, some white parents pulled their kids out of public schools rather than having them attend alongside black students. And in the 1970s, some parents removed their sons from Little League baseball when girls were first allowed to join. The resistance was couched in language about tradition and safety, much like these arguments about trans athletes. This is not about safety at all. This is about an unwillingness to share space and opportunity with people who aren't like us. This is about prejudice and bigotry. A better use of this board's time would be to address how to protect trans students from abusive community members like this. As mental health advocate, I have to point out that what these people are doing to kids in our community is reprehensible. One in 10 high school students in suburban Cook County reports seriously considering suicide in the last year. Transgender youth are two to two and a half times more likely to commit suicide, or, excuse me, have a depressive symptom and suicidal thoughts in their peers. 18% of LGBT youth have attempted suicide, about twice that of the general population. This is based on social rejection, bullying, harassment, and discrimination, shaming and targeting transgender teenagers in a public forum isn't just cruel, it directly impacts mental health vulnerabilities that the LGBTQ+ youth are in danger from having. I encourage this board to review what's being done to protect LGBTQ+ athletes from abusive coaches, peers, and fans like this. Moreover, I ask you to ensure students in LGBTQ community have access to the mental health support they need to endure the disgraceful behavior of adults like this. Thank you.
Next up, next up, next up is, next, next up is Jane Van, followed by Hannah Schulz.
My name is Jane Van, and I am a resident of District 211. I have three children who have graduated from the district. Also, I will be very transparent and let you know that I am a very proud parent of a transgender child. The D-211 Parents for Privacy Group has posted a statement saying, end quote, "D-211 is still putting girls in harm's way. D-211 does not care about girls' safety and privacy," end quote. To the best of my knowledge, in the past 10 years that this has been discussed, no girl has encountered an unsafe transgender child. The unsafe conditions and inequities that are occurring are being created by the parents outraged by the transgender child living their true identity.
Excuse me, I'm speaking... Just a moment, please. Police officer, will you please remove the woman in green in the second row here in the middle section?
She's threatening me. She's threatening me.
Will you please remove this person in the green shirt in the second row?
She's threatening me.
She's disrupt, this woman is disrupting the meeting. Will you please, I'm asking you to please leave of your own accord, or we will have the police officer escort you out.
Why? Because, because the white lady...
It's your choice. Are you going to leave on your own accord, or are we going to have the police escort you out?
What am I being removed for?
It's my discretion. You're disrupting the meeting.
I'm disrupting.
Either leave the meeting, police officer, please remove this individual from our meeting.
No, I'm not going to leave. You didn't even give me a warning. You had no problem with these people were screaming and asking...
Either you leave on your own accord, or you will be escorted out of the room.
I asked you to call decorum, and now this woman is threatening me.
Please leave the meeting.
And you're asking me to leave?
Please leave the meeting.
But do you see what, what, you're just following master's orders? What is this? What is this? I mean, there's no reason for me to be kicked out. What is the reason? Why am I being kicked out? All these board members, nobody's got a tongue? Nobody's got a tongue?
I would like to call for a recess. May I have a consensus, Mr. Van Dyke?
Here's a woman threatening me, and that man, the white man, looked at me and said...
We're going to call a recess for this meeting, and the board is going to leave the room at this time. Thank you. Thank you.
This meeting will resume in approximately one minute.
I'm calling the meeting of Township High School, District 211, back in order. We will continue with Jane Van, followed by Hannah Schulz.
Okay, now back to where I was. The District 211 Parents for Privacy also state that Peyton McNabb suffered a brain injury playing volleyball against a male. I ask if this is the only brain injury ever suffered by a volleyball player. I'll answer this question for you: No, she is not. More than 214,000 high school and college athletes have been injured playing volleyball since 2009. The vast majority of these injuries and accidents involve cisgender teammates and competitors. No one is calling for cisgender athletes involved in injuries and accidents to be banned from sports. Another issue that was brought up was apparently the person that was coaching the volleyball team has decided to quit. Don't know why, I don't know their personal thoughts, but I'm thinking that it is possible that the coach quit because they don't want to have to deal with the outraged parents spreading their hatred.
Thank you. Before we go on, I would like to make a statement, and that is to let the people in our audience know that if we go to recess again, it is a possibility that this room will be cleared, in which case, public comments will come to an end. So I encourage you to be nice to each other as far as listening, and respectful, and hold the decorum of the fact that this is a public meeting, and I appreciate your support. Next is Hannah Schulz. Next is Kathy Riesberg.
My name is Hannah, and I am a resident of D-211, and my younger brother is currently at Conant right now. I am actually going to be reading something that my sister wrote that she wasn't able to share with us today. This email is in response to the news that a biological male has been allowed on the girls' volleyball team. Keyword, "girls." Not only this, but the student is given access to the girls' locker room as well. As a biological female who was a student athlete, this is very concerning. Now, this has nothing to do with hate, nor not accepting them for what they choose to be. The fact of the matter is that this is discriminatory, predatory, and unfair to the girls who have put blood, sweat, and tears into their sport. These girls work hard to be the best that they can be, and they seek to play the best teams in high school. As a girl who was in sports, my skill set was competitive enough to compete against other girls. That's the whole part of having girls versus boys' sports. I biologically cannot compete against a man. That is a fact. Girls can join these teams to play, girls join these teams to play other girls. If they didn't want to play just girls, they would join a club team. You may be thinking, what is the issue with letting a transgender student on the team? Well, thank goodness I'm here to help. Number one, letting a man compete against and beat women goes against everything that women have fought for in terms of equality. We want to be treated the same as men, but we don't want to compete against men. This is harmful for girls who work so hard for the wins, championships, and scholarships that they receive from sports. The fact of the matter is that this is an issue. While I will not go into every case, there are many examples of women who have been, who have lost scholarships and spots on teams to transgender athletes. As a traditional feminist woman, this is unacceptable. We did not fight for equality just to let men into our sports. Number two, transgender athletes who join girls' sports are biologically made to be more athletic than women. Once again, this puts the girls at an unfair disadvantage. There's quite literally nothing they can do. You can't compete against biology. Thank you. Keep women in women's sports. Men have testosterone naturally, which makes them stronger, taller, and more athletic. In what world does this help uplift young girls in high school sports? You're setting them up for loss and failure, and this is failure that could have been controlled. As hard as they work, it won't matter, as biological men will always have an advantage. This should be taken seriously, because it is women's rights as well. As an adult on the student board, do your job and listen. Ask what the students think, and listen to both sides. Please do your part as an adult that we entrusted to this position, and take time to bring this to your students. Once again, this has nothing to do with hate. The individual is able to make these choices, but these choices are affecting girls' sports, and that is wrong. Please take time to consider how this will set back girls' sports. Do your part and keep women in women's sports. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kathy Riesberg, followed by Karen Powers.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Riesberg, and as a resident of Palatine for the past 47 years, I just want to thank you and the D-211 staff for doing whatever it takes to provide all D-211 students the support, education, and sense of community they deserve. I can't thank you enough for the way you all work to keep the emotional and physical safety of all students at the forefront of all that you are doing, and that you've made it clear to parents that secure gun storage at home is an essential way for all parents to partner with D-211 to help all students and staff learn and work in a safe learning environment. It is not gone unnoticed by this community that you go the extra mile to make sure all students find a sense of belonging and purpose, feel valued, respected, seen, and heard, no matter their zip code, the color of their skin, their faith, their gender, or their gender identity. I am so very glad and grateful for the way that you recognize that all students represent such diversity in the way they learn and require equitable access to learning and a sense of inclusion, no matter who they are or how they learn. So, tonight, I just want to wish you and the D-211 staff a wonderful 2025, 2026 school year, and want you to know that the majority of our community is standing with you in support of all that you are doing and all of our D-211 students. Thank you, and welcome, Dr. Campbell.
Thank you. Next is Karen Powers.
Good evening. My name is Karen Powers. I am a resident of Hoffman Estates, and my daughter thankfully graduated Hoffman High two and a half years ago. I'm speaking tonight to support the young women of the Conant Girls Volleyball Team and their families, after hearing the news that a boy is being allowed to compete on their team. I'm disgusted by the way this district has dismissed the safety of these young girls, as well as the safety of the young girls on the opposing teams that they will be playing. I am disgusted that the district is robbing these young women of athletic opportunities, not only at the high school level, but potential opportunities to compete at the collegiate level. The district is in direct violation of a federal executive order and risks losing their federal funding. The boy in question is 6'4" and has zero volleyball experience, yet somehow managed to make the team. A longtime beloved coach of the girls' volleyball team quit, and if she is here or watching, I have the utmost respect for you standing firm on your morals and values. As I look at the board in front of me, I see members with daughters of their own, and I ask you, would you want your daughter to compete against a boy who is 6'4"? Would you be happy if a boy secured a spot on the team meant for your daughter? Would you want your daughter to undress in front of him in the locker room? Would you want him to undress in front of her? Would you want your daughter to be hit in the head with a volleyball that was spiked by a boy? Look up Peyton McNabb, who suffered a brain injury after being hit in the head by a boy with the ball. Boys are inherently stronger than girls. That is a fact. If you disagree with this statement, please explain to me why we have boys' sports and girls' sports. Members of this board, past and present, over the last five years have followed the science when making damaging decisions regarding the students of D-211. Why has this suddenly stopped, why have you stopped following the science? Is it fear of a lawsuit from a 6'4" boy and his family? I would hope that the girls on the Conant volleyball team are preparing for legal action, but I also hope the teams they compete against are as well. Science says he is a biological boy and can never be a girl. This is not an attack on the boy. If he wants to pretend to be a girl, that is his choice. However, it is not society's responsibility to pretend he is one. It's not a girl's responsibility to feel uncomfortable or unsafe for the sake of a boy pretending to be a girl. He should be participating in sports designated for boys because he will always be one. When do the girls in D-211 get to feel safe, recognized, and protected?
Thank you. Next is, next is Sophia Steele.
Good evening. My name is Sophia Steele. I went to Hoffman Estates High School. I played golf there, and I then graduated from UW-Oshkosh and was a female golfer in college as well. As a former D-211 student and athlete, now a collegiate athlete, what I have seen here is heartbreaking. High school sports are a place for athletes to truly flourish at their sport. Whether that's them coming in as a freshman, they have four years to truly excel and to go play at the collegiate level, just like I did. What we're doing here now is we're discouraging girls who are playing to lose their spot on a team, and then quit, and not be able to play at the collegiate level and have the experience, just as I did. Now, I know many of you have daughters in D-211. My question to you is, do you want your daughters losing their spot on their sports team just because a man decided to transition to female? Do you want your daughters losing, do you want your daughters changing in the locker room, and next to them is a penis? Do you want your girls to talk about girl stuff, their periods, whatever that might be, next to someone that has male genitalia? Probably not. But I can tell you, at Conant, that's what's happening. And if we allow it, yes, it's one person right now, but if we allow it to happen, it's just going to keep happening. And there's so many schools in D-211, I can tell you, it's going to happen again. The point is, males have 39.4% more muscle mass than a female. Female's that of 29.4%. You can't change that with hormones. That's, that's not going to change if you take more testosterone. They're going to be stronger. If I went to go play golf with a male, thank you. If I went to go play golf with a male, sure, I will not win, because they hit way farther than I do. I'm good, but I'm not that of a male level. I hope you realize that female athletes are really tired of fighting for their own sport. We have Title IX for a reason. We fought so hard, because I don't want to play golf with a male, but I feel like we're moving backwards. And here I am, I went to school, but I came home just for this reason, because I truly feel like we're moving backwards, and Title IX is to separate that. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes public comments for this evening. Again, if you were unable to speak during public comments tonight, you have a couple of options. One is to email the Board of Education and/or the superintendent, and second is, we do have another regular board meeting coming up next month. The next item is recommended action that the board enter closed session to discuss self-evaluation practices and procedures of professional ethics when meeting with a representative of a statewide association, of which the public body is a member. May I have a roll call, please? May I have a motion, please? Can I have a second? Thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Excuse me. Mr. Dem, oh, sorry. Mrs. Lopez?
Aye.
Ms. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Van Dyke?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
All right, the next order of business is to return from closed session. May I have a motion, please? May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Barron? Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mrs. Lopez?
Aye.
Ms. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Van Dyke?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
The next item is to adjourn, and as board president with no other items before this board, I hereby call the meeting adjourned. Thank you.